Call meeting in order. Pledge of Allegiance in the moment is signed.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
So no one signed up for public comment number one. We now go to our superintendent to go over the policies.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our policy committee meeting. We do have a number of policies to review with the board members that are here this evening and with our community. Talk through some of the remaining zero policies that we had brought back into committee to discuss that a little bit more, and then we have some we've entered into on the list here, some one hundredths of the policies. So let's begin, and just a little bit of the instructions, just so you're following along. There is a committee cover page for this evening. They're color coded. You can see the blue that they are the ones that are policies under review from our previous meeting, held back in September. The red identify, obviously, requiring review based on their dates. Remember, we're trying to look back beyond anything that was over three years. And there's no updated versions that are available from PSBA, meaning there's been no changes or nor updates in that time. So we really just want to make sure we put eyes on that, have an updated review of the policy so that it does stay within our timetable that we had. The green are those that should be reviewed. There is more recent draft or attachments that are part of that. Any black policies, and I don't believe we have any this evening. If we had, they would be currently current since they fall within the three years. So why don't we get started? And that takes us to our first item B under the discussion section. That is our 004.1, which is the student representative to the school board. And we did have some noted changes that we wanted to make. Thank you to Mrs. Kratz, heads and works with our student representatives. So we did make some updates to this policy. And you can see those are noted inside the addition that you have. Under the authority section, there was a change, and thank you for noting that, Mrs. Kratz. We have our board members, our student representatives attend our legislative meeting, which is always the second board meeting of each month. So we have that as a change. We also have, under the participation section, you can see, again, changing that first to second meeting. And there was no real encouragement to attend other meetings. However, we have placed that in there, kind of as a disclaimer for our student representatives, not that it's a requirement, but are encouraged to attend as we want their voices heard as often as possible as they are representatives for our student body. There was a change also that we wanted to make in the second paragraph under participation, where it reads, "Student representatives shall work together with the assistance of the student council advisor or advisors to prepare a brief report with prior approval of the building principal and representing representative board member." We wanted to make sure we had that included in that. Currently, Mrs. Kratz serves in that role. And there was some wording in here that really was not representative of how we title this. We title it as a board representative report. It's listed in the current policy as slash board committee reports section. So we are recommending a change with that. I do have, and I did invite Mr. Hauk out this evening. Mr. Hauk, why don't you step to the podium? And I know Mr. Hauk works very, very closely with Mr. Sparks and most especially the student representatives, and currently, Mrs. Kratz in the role, and just kind of liaisons and works with our students in regards to this. I wanted to, any members here that wanted to ask Mr. Hauk any questions about? I think there were some questions that came up a little bit in regards to selection process and that there was some differentials between one year and the next. So we want to make sure that we're, number one, following the policy, and number two, that we have the policy updated in this process that we want taking place from that. So, Mr. Hauk, do you want to share a little bit about process and selection? And I know you're somewhat new to this as well. I think this is your second year being the liaison, third year, second year?
Second full year, I think. It was halfway through that first year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And the student council had just changed over a little bit before that, too. So it's kind of like the entire team was new. I was able to reach out to actually Dr. Foley the other day after I talked to Dr. David Heitz, kind of get some history. I guess this position was created around 2019, 2020. At the time, student council kind of directed a lot of the background, kind of getting its position started. But our process that we kind of, in March, student council reaches out to current 10th graders to see if there's any interest for students to be the upcoming junior board rep. At that time, the student council advisor and principal at least would get together, book questions together for the team. Interview panel would be put together. At the time, to start, the interview teams was a principal. It included the student council advisor, the current student board reps. And at the time, it was also whoever the school board member was that reached out, or that kind of like Mrs. Kratz's liaison role now, I'm not sure who it was at the time. They were part of the interview team. In my year or two doing that, we haven't had a board member there. The first year we did it, it was the principal, student council advisor, student board rep. We did the interview process. Last year, it was a smaller group. It was the students and myself. But I do think it would be probably better, Ms. Kratz, if you were able to join, if you're still that rep, to have that team. The only other person we thought about introducing to that, too, was maybe the student council student president to be part of that as well, since student council is a big part of the position. So that's coming out. So in March, that communication will come out through the student council advisor, and we'll start gaining candidates for the upcoming year.
So you would want to increase the group down to three if we put the student council president on there?
No, it would be student council advisor, principal, board representative, and the current student board rep that's on there. So it'd be around four or five-ish on there. The idea was a question, should we invite the student council president that's sitting to also be a part? So that would be about six people as that committee.
How many candidates do you roughly get a point?
Last year, I believe we had around eight or nine total.
All AP classes type thing?
It was a mix. It was not all, they weren't all AP students. They were all solid students, but it was a mix.
Kratz, do you want to share any concerns on selection process? I think what we're keyed in on is that first paragraph under selection, to make sure that we're accurate, and then we want, they become the marching orders so that we're following this process.
I mean, right now, it states that they're nominated by the BASH administration. That's not what happens, right? You don't nominate students, say?
Yeah, I would say after the interview process, we would select a candidate before. But yeah, the beginning process nomination, we're looking for applicants. It's still interested, correct?
Okay. And then this sentence, I don't know if I'm just not reading it right. It just doesn't make sense to me. Two board representatives shall be appointed by the board president, which that doesn't happen. And then two select candidates. Like, what is that even? I don't even understand what that's saying. Is that saying the president selects candidates? It says before, what is it saying?
Turn your microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Am I not, like, is it?
That's what we're trying to parse through. So I think what the key here would be is, and here's what I would select or suggest we do. Stick with two student representatives shall be selected by the BASH interview panel.
Sounds good.
And I think behind the scenes, our interview panel, we have an idea of what we want that to be in terms of student council representation, administration representation, and such. This group of two students will include no more than one student that is a member of the senior class, right?
Would it make sense to say that one's a junior and one's a senior?
We can do that. Does that make more sense? All right.
That's currently what it's been since I've been there, one senior, one junior.
So we can include that language, then, to be one senior and one junior. And my suggestion would be that the two selected or two recommended board representatives shall be approved by the Board of School Directors. So you would officially take a motion, or you would take a motion each year that each member would be officially approved in a formalized setting. It's not an appointment necessarily, but that they'd be approved as the student representative for the year.
Sounds good.
They both wouldn't be doing that. They, obviously, once they're on, they matriculate from 11th grade to 12th grade and remain on.
Yeah, my computer's rebooting, so I don't have it right in front of me right now. But I think it says further down that they collaborate with student council to write their reports. I don't think that happens.
In my experience, that has not happened the time I've been there. The two girls worked, or two student reps have worked together to come up their report. In the past, maybe there was, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, so just a change.
So that we should eliminate that language, then?
Yeah, I just want it to reflect what actually happened.
Yeah, it says, "Under the second paragraph, under participation, student representatives shall work together with the assistance of the student council advisor to prepare a brief report."
Yeah, currently, what happens is students will send the report to myself, and also, they'll meet with Mrs. Kratz ahead of time to kind of review the report, and then they'll submit the report, I believe, within like 48 hours to Ms. Kramer and head of the next board meeting.
Okay. So we'll change the language in there to suggest that we prepare a brief report in conjunction with the board, board member representative and administration at BASH to finalize their report.
Yeah, I mean, we don't change anything. We just.
I've never changed anything.
Let them practice.
Yeah. My only question, a timeline for that. So right now, the last two years I've been there, we've reached out for new candidates in March. When do you want to approve the new candidate? Like, in which board meeting?
In March. So I think it would be helpful for us to do that probably in May. And then we have that board member can be introduced.
Okay.
We traditionally would start introducing them in September.
So have that new candidate by kind of the end of April?
Yeah, is that too much of a crunch timeline?
It's a pretty simple turnaround, I think.
Yeah, I'd say we'd have them either May or June. We can have them board approved. We want to have board approve them prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Is this considered a commit, I mean, one of our committees that we would have to have two people on it? Or just, it's not officially a committee?
No, it's not officially a committee. They're just making a report out. Yep. Okay. We'll update that with the necessary language and bring that back to one of our future Cal meetings as a first read, then.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Al, thank you. All right. Takes us down to item C, policy 005, the organization. There was an update to this policy that was delivered to the board. Board, you have the update to that policy as well. Both policies, the current and the updated one from PSBA, are listed on the website as well. In the update, you can see that, and one of the things that we did have discussion on and why this was brought back and remained in committee. If you go to the board committees section of it. And under that, the board has the authority to appoint board committees. Board committees authorized to take official action or render advice on district business shall operate in accordance with provisions of the Sunshine Act. Then it starts to list the committees. The first item is committees shall consist of no more than, and we had a discussion at our last meeting, of no more than three members and a minimum of two members. And that got into some discussion, and I think there was some disagreement with the numbers in regards to that. So it does kind of stay in line with where we currently are. We have two member committees right now, two chairpersons of the committee. This offers an opportunity for three, where it engages more board members in the committee efforts. But it doesn't go beyond that. We don't want to get near five to make it a quorum, obviously. And we certainly don't want less than two. So any more thoughts in regards to that as wording?
Didn't we do a show of hands? And basically, the show of hands was a majority, basically, said going up to three?
I don't necessarily recall that, but yeah.
It got to the point it was contentious.
Yeah.
So again, the whole idea is, I think we keep it at the two and with the option of a third if somebody else wants to be on that committee. And that's up to the president.
Have you, how have you seen it elsewhere?
I've seen it with two, three is typical, the number. And I've seen it manifest itself differently and so forth. But those are typically, you know, three allows, obviously, just more voice and input into setting the agenda, into guiding the discussions, and having different thoughts involved. Certainly don't want any less than two when you do this. So I think that offers more opportunity for engagement of nine individuals into committees that may, that might be blocked out of for some reason because there's already two, and it gives another open slot to be able to engage.
Food for thought.
So if you're good with that, the other thing.
I'm sorry, food for thought. What if we only get one person that wants that position? And we don't get our two?
We need, well.
Does it happen like we do, either Tony or I got thrown on as the extra?
Yes, raise your right hand. Yeah, and certainly, we want engagement from membership of the board on these. And I think it's one of the things we go, the next item I wanted to bring up to, if you continue down that list, and as the list ends, there's a line that says, "Members of the board to the following standing committees, where they shall serve a term of one year." And our current standing committees that we created for this fiscal year thus far have been finance, policy, education services, and facilities. And I think if you maintain a standing committee structure that doesn't extend too far, it gives you more opportunity where we would get more involvement by membership of the board into those four standing committees. Obviously, there's at times going to be other ad hoc committees that get created for various things, and we've talked about those. But I think this structure, and I would really recommend and encourage the board to see this year through with regard to, through the fiscal year and into, you know, our next reorganization a year from now, to see how these four structured meetings went and to evaluate those. We've really only been able to host a committee for each. We finally came back to a second finance committee, which was the first one. So we've had two finance committees, and we've only been able to hold one of the other committees. I think they're structured in a way where it doesn't create more evenings out, and they're adjacent to some of the meetings, but the focus for an hour can really remain on those four hardened areas. And we can gain a lot more focused time to allow for those. So those were the two areas that I had noted that, why this policy didn't make it out of committee. I think there had been some membership of the board that were there that evening that recommended a whole other list of other committees that should be part of standing committees. Some of those, I believe, get captured in ad hocks that are necessary due to circumstance and timing. Contracts come up. Sometimes we need, you know, ad hoc committees that are created for the intent of a short period of time, not necessarily standing ones that are calendared and so forth. So any thoughts on it? You okay with us maintaining this, then? Okay. So I would suggest, then, we bring this back. We'll get those things listed into that updated policy and bring that back for the next committee meeting of the whole, for a first read as well. The next item was 006, and this was... There were changes. There were some modifications to this as noted. The order of business of the business items came up into question. We did make some adjustments to that so that we were following policy when it comes to that. There is still, at the bottom of page four, you can see where the order of business shall be followed as stated on the agenda unless altered by the superintendent or the presiding officer. So I think there was some altering of that through time. What had dropped off had been the old business. We reincorporated that back on there. If there are any necessary special reports or secretary's reports or anything from the solicitor, to date, there hasn't necessarily been any of those. We would incorporate those back into there for that. Outside of that, the changes that you see that are in there, that are in red, are the updates that were and have been recommended by PSBA. Really, nothing major in there with regard to it. This was last looked at, the original policies, 006, 2023. So it's not out of date for looking at it, but it is out of some of the updates that are necessary. So again, I would recommend us bringing this forward for that with those updates. The 006.1, the attendance via electronic communications. Again, this was adopted in 2015, so it's certainly well out of date of its review cycle. It was revised back in 2020 for obvious reasons. It was revised due to the pandemic and allowing for the operational aspects of electronic communications for meetings. What was asked at the meeting from the solicitor was whether or not there's any legality or any opinion with regard to the ability for the hosting of a meeting and the number of individuals that do not need to be in person, that could be virtual. And there is no legal standing with regards to that. You did it back during the time of the initial pandemic, before meetings started to become hosted back in person. And, you know, nothing's really changed with regard to that. So for this, there are some changes that we're going to have to utilize in order to suggest some things. So I guess the first question to the members here tonight and to our chairpersons are, where do you stand in terms of some of the questions that were being raised of having to have a quorum in person and those that could be not attending in person?
Didn't Mr. Saltanik say we could, as long as they were, and, you know, we could count them as a quorum if they're calling in or FaceTiming?
They could. They could.
So we'd have our quorum no matter what. So only if we got five.
But under the guidelines, the current policy under the guidelines says, "A majority of school directors shall be physically present at a board meeting when a school director attends through electronic communications."
Okay, we're in a snowstorm. Do you cancel the meeting?
Well, that becomes, that becomes the question to this policy, right? So it's, you know, it's adding those decision points that whether you, as a board, believe that a quorum can exist both in present and virtually all at the same time, or whether it can exist virtually only. Like, if we were in the midst of a snowstorm this evening, would we cancel this meeting and reschedule it, or postpone this meeting and reschedule it for a different date? Or would we still host the meeting in its entirety and do it virtually through, you know, Zoom application or something like that? The current guidelines don't allow for that. So the policy stipulates that the majority of individuals would still need to be present, which means we would have to postpone the meeting if, you know, we had the district closed for safety reasons and such.
My only concern with not having a quorum here is you don't know what's going to be on your agenda from week to week. And if it's something important where a lot of discussion is going to take place and the need for that, just that continuity of being together and not at home, because sometimes you lose contact, too, for one reason or another. So I would be hesitant to, I know we did it during COVID, and we did all the voting during COVID, and that happened. But if the weather's bad or that many people, if that many people can't make it, that we don't have a quorum, there must be something going on. So I kind of think having the quorum here protects the integrity of the board. That's my opinion on it.
You want five here?
I think so. Otherwise, I think, you know, we should just cancel it. If four people are already unable to make it, then it doesn't happen that often. But I think, like I said, I just think it protects the integrity of the board, of the voting, of everyone, you know, present, that we're here, if we can be here.
Was there wording in there when we did have COVID?
This policy, it was last revised in July of 2020, and this is the last revision to that, which would have required, if the board were following policy in 2020, that you did have a quorum present and wouldn't have been hosting a fully virtual meeting based on this.
A new health and safety plan that we wrote, basically, the district would never be shut down. It would just be, worst case scenario.
And what I do believe allowed for is some of the legislative actions by the governor in the emergency pandemic nature to it, allowed for those things to happen on top of the policy that existed. So it allowed for some of the actions, some of the unusual actions and steps that were taken in the emerging time period that was that summer and even fall and spring of into '21. And I don't think the board then really went back and after kind of the dust settled of the pandemic. So here we are. We need to relook at this again and confirm what it is the board wants to do moving forward.
I agree with you, Scott, but the only thing I was thinking of is, and I have no idea what this would be, but what about in a complete emergency situation? But maybe it's not, you know, governed by the governor. If we're in one here, you know, and people can't get in, but we need to talk about something, are we putting ourselves in a corner here that we technically can't?
You would have to, if it's not a meeting that's been scheduled. So you might be talking about more of an executive session. An executive session can be called at any point in time for the board to meet for an emergent thing that might be needed in that of an emergency. If, for a scheduled meeting that's been advertised, this policy would dictate that, as Ms. Scott references, that five would need to be, a minimum of a quorum would need to be present for the meeting to take place.
Would we stop or we had to do something, like have to have some sort of emergency?
Yeah, well, you wouldn't be hosting any type of actionable meeting if the board needed to meet an executive session for, to discuss safety or personnel, emergency types of actions of that nature, which are traditional of an executive session. Then you can, the board has the opportunity to schedule that, and the president can schedule that. We're talking more of the scheduled, the meetings themselves that are scheduled. So do you want to bring this forward back to a full committee meeting to engage the full board in this and move this out of committee to see? We don't have full representation here at the committee meeting tonight. Do we want to bring this back out to a full committee and possibly get?
And then leave it with the five?
Yep. I'm going to leave this untouched as such, and have the larger discussion at the committee of the whole. Yep. I'm not, I'm going to leave this untouched as such and have the larger discussion at the committee of the whole meeting, future committee of the whole meeting. We won't change anything to that to see if we can get a little bit more insight into that.
If something does arise, I would, I would imagine we'd get legal involved if it came into something.
Yes, absolutely. And, okay, so takes us out of the zeros and puts us into the 100s. And so the first policy is policy 100, and that is comprehensive planning. And ironically, this year begins, our planning year for comprehensive planning, which is a responsibility every three years by the school district under school code through PDE. And our policy here for policy 100, it was adopted in 2015. We really have not looked at the policy since, but there is an AR. If you go down to item G, there is nothing that's changed with the policy except the fact that they've put together an administrative regulations, which really help to guide what the stages are and steps are for the comprehensive planning. So it's a pretty thorough guide that explains what the policy says in, in, in large part. And it really helps to set the direction for the processes needed for comprehensive planning. So I would highly recommend, you know, that we've reviewed the policy. Again, there's no updates to the policy itself, but we've added then the AR, which was never there before back in 2015.
Was this, you had given an invitation out to two other board members about this?
So there needs to be, it's required that there is board representation on a comprehensive planning. There's requirement to have student, parent, community representation on that. So Mrs. Petrie and Mr. Stout are both leading that comprehensive planning. The first meeting is a kickoff on December 15th. And the board will hopefully approve that. I believe March is when that needs to be approved by the board. So that'll be a committee of a number of stakeholders. So we did send some invitations out to the, to education services representatives for that.
I know, I, I know everything can't be planned around us, but it's really difficult when it's like the same day of the week for all three meetings. Can't take off work the same day. Like maybe if it was like a variety of days.
So I'll let you have those discussions with Mrs. Petrie and Mr. Stout about, about some of that. Yeah. And, and, and again, there is no requirement as to the who, the what. We wanted to make sure, we felt education services memberships are most closely related to the curriculum and data. Comprehensive planning is really all about the data and it's all about the teaching and learning aspects. It's very concentrated as opposed to what the strategic planning was, which encompasses a lot of other things. This is very targeted toward achievement and continuous improvement academically.
So this would be considered an ad hoc?
This, um,
if you're inviting people from?
I, I guess we would, it's not an ag, it's not a committee that's formed by the board. It's a committee that's formed internally by code. It's ad hoc in that, you know, we are, we, we have to have board representation on it. It's a requirement. It does not determine how much board, board involvement. Yep. So again, I would recommend, I highly recommend bringing the AR into the fold with regard to this because it really does outline the policy. All right, district vision, mission and goals, policy 101. And as we had most recently, and you as a board approved the strategic plan back in June, along with the approval of that strategic plan came the updated version of district vision, mission, and not necessarily goals, but values. So if you look on the updated policy 101, you'll see a number of lined out and bolded updates to that. We actually had a working document of vision, mission and goals, which we began with and altered and edited through. And through the murk of what you see there on that is actually what our vision is to foster a welcoming and innovative learning community, empowers all students to thrive in future career path and contributes as engaged, informed citizens. And our mission is to cultivate curiosity, critical thinking, decision-making abilities, equipping all students to be future ready and resilient. And then what was listed originally as goals, we determined that they really weren't goals because they were statements that were not measurable in any way, shape or form. So they really were things that we value and the board and a district and certainly most of our community values in what we do as a district to provide for our staff, students and staff and the community at large. And you can see those things listed there. So we did change that. So I would recommend that we update, and you can see the update and we'll clean this up for when it comes to a first read to look very similar to what you see in the, in the, in the current policy, but it will have our updated language and obviously goals change to values as the title.
Is this what basically we held the four different meetings where the parents, students came in? There was about 100 on that committee?
Yeah, this, this was, the strategic plan was where we held five meetings. And we began with actually this document with our vision, mission and goals document that set the stage. And then we broke into all those different focus areas and established goals throughout the district for the next five years. So with your blessing, we'll bring that forward then. Okay. All right. Moving right along, that takes us down to policy 102. And that's academic standards. You can see the, the current policy as opposed to the academic standards updated policy for 2025. Again, we have a policy that was 2015. You can see in bold all of the updated language that's represented in there. And I think what draws my attention's most is much of the technology and science areas as we've updated steel standards. Technology over the last 10 years has evolved tremendously and our standards linked, learning link to the, the standards related to technology has ever much increased as well. So those are all the language that identifies. And again, this is chapter four in Pennsylvania school code governs standards. This is just a large umbrella policy that establishes saying our curriculum is tied to the Pennsylvania Department of Education standards. And here are some of the big pieces to all of that.
Can we ask Mrs. Petrie to possibly look into and Mr. Sparks heading AI to a possible, make it a possible class or not?
Well, I, I think what we're doing currently with AI is some of the things that we are exposing, you know, we, we, with your blessing and, and purchase of Magic School, we've incorporated AI very much into the elementary settings. We've incorporated some targeted studies of AI and detection systems at the, at the secondary level as well. So we're utilizing it right now. We don't have a designated class that's identifying that, but some of the technology standards actually get into some of the, the AI as we traditionally think about it. So I wouldn't recommend for this policy that we do anything different. We are ever evolving our curriculum to, as standards change. And the steel standards was the, the largest adaptation that came through in the last couple of years as it relates to science and technology. And we've really altered a lot of the ways that we look at some of those things. And you saw in the, and you have it in the high school course of studies for this evening for your, your, your consideration for approval. Some of those courses that we changed in name are really identify with some of the AI things that we're using in some of those. You know, the theater production one in particular is, is one that is utilizing a lot of different AI approaches. All right. So that's 102. 103 is discrimination slash Title IX, sexual harassment affecting students. And you'll see the current policy that we have and the updated 2025 policy. There had been some changes to, and updates to the Title IX. And last year, there had been changes that brought that back to the original 2020, closer, more closely aligned to the 2020 policy. So inside the update, you'll see some language, but not a, not a lot of changes to that. There are some, some more definitions that you see in there that are bolded, that are changed. But our processes that we had been incorporating into all of our investigations and our Title IX determinations, much of that is, still remains in the 2020 model and mode due to federal guidance and federal law that is in place right now. So this update again is mostly guided, not mostly, is, is currently guided by federal law. And again, highly recommend that we align with federal law with regard to this policy and that we adopt the updated changes to, to anything associated to this. And this is a policy that strictly deals with our students. We do have a separate policy that's, that's for staff.
When are these pol-, when are these policies required to be put into place?
When are they required to be put in?
As soon as we vote on them, do they go in?
Well, they need to, they, they go into place after we go through an approvals process of second read. So we have a first read and a second read.
Because my only concern is I'm looking here, you guys Department of Education, which we kind of know is going by the wayside.
Yeah. There's always things that are changing and that's why you can, you, you can't necessarily always play catch up, but you want to maintain as much accuracy to where the laws align with your policies. And that's why we want to constantly do a review cycle each and every year and going through the policies so that they're not, you know, we can't be year to year aligned with everything, but we certainly want to make sure that we're aligned as closely within some of the timeframes as, as necessary and possible. So again, this is a 103 policy that really aligns with, with federal guidance.
Does this policy like have, like, like kids that want to play on sport? Like if boys want to play in a girl's sports team, does that apply to this?
No, but it gives, it gives some direction in terms of gender and, and so forth. Does not get into the weeds of, of that. It really qualifies on gender and, and such. Yep. Hi, Michelle. Okay, 103, one, point one, then it's a nondescrip-, nondiscrimination policy of qualified students with student, with disabilities, those students that are identified that do have an IEP and the nondiscrimination pieces to that. The last time that we had revised the policy was back in 2019. So this is six years out of, out of, out of its review cycle. Does have some things in there that really update the procedural safeguards that are given to parents, the compliant procedures investigative nature to any discrimination claims and such that would be aligned with students with a disability. Again, it's federal guidance, federal laws that are being stemmed down to meet this. And again, there's not a lot of significant changes to the policy that exists now, but it does update the, some of the necessary current language.
I see one word, that's it. So we can't bring this for a vote tonight because it's just that one word, correct?
Correct. This needs to go through. We will bring this to a committee of the whole meeting to see if there's any more discussion and then bring it to a first read at a legislative that will need to go through another stage of second read then as well. There is inside the 103, one, yeah, there, as I mentioned, there was a procedural safeguards attachment. There's an attachment for a notice of district initiated evaluation and provision of services for qualified students with disabilities. There's a parent guardian request for evaluation, termination and modification under section 504. And then there's also report form for complaints and of discrimination of students that qualify with disabilities as necessary. So. All right. If we can move that forward, we'll bring that back to a larger committee. And that then does bring us to 104, policy 104. Again, this is a policy dealing similar to the discrimination Title IX sexual harassment policy that was related solely to students. This does update the policy related to staff. And this policy is the 2020 version of policy 104 with additional updates to address amendments to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and amendments to the Fair Labor Standards Act for breastfeeding accommodations in the workplace, including identifying religious creed and pregnancy, childbirth and pregnancy-related conditions as protected classifications and as well as special definitions and examples for those terms. So you can see some of those things related to that.
Just more towards my educate, how many days do we give a teacher on after pregnancy? What is there?
Mr. Holland, do you want to talk about maternity leave?
So all of our staff, if they're here for a year, work 1,250 hours and are eligible for FMLA, they're, they're eligible for up to 12 weeks or 480 hours. Yeah. So there's not, it all falls under the federal statute of FMLA, not necessarily maternity leave or paternity leave.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions related to it? I think this, again, if we want to bring back to a full committee, just a review. And then the last document I have is, this is an AR really related to 104 point, 104. And it's 104.2, and this is the reasonable break time and lactation accommodations administrative regulations. And something that we already do. We do not have any administrative regulations written into our policy, policies currently, but this does give direction and would give direction to the, to the district and to our employees related or students related to reasonable break time and lactation accommodations as listed there in this particular AR. So it guides the where, the when, the how, who's in charge, who sets the, the, the course for directing this and makes the necessary accommodations needed for, for lactation accommodations. So that's all the policies that we have this evening, most of which are kind of guided by updates in federal law. But we will bring all these back to the full committee for further discussion and then possibly out of full committee for the first read at a, at a future legislative meeting. The one policy, I'm not going to do anything with update. I think the via, the attendance at meetings via electronic communications. And we'll let that stand where it is right now and have a larger discussion with the, the board at, at a future point in time as to any, any directions they would like to give then. All right. Mr. Zwa, that's all I have.
All right. Nobody signed up for public comment number two. Dr. David Heiser, upcoming policy.
Sure. The upcoming policy. Sure, the upcoming policy, next policy committee is slated for February 24th. It's at 6:00 PM and it'll be held here at the Education Services Center.
Okay, motion for adjourn.
Motion.
A second.
We are done.